Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have our secretary in motion on this or somebody who would like to look into my right and to my left.
I know, I know, I take minutes on two other boards. But I have a feeling this is gonna be a really quick meeting, so.
You're gonna go ahead and volunteer for that one?
Okay. Okay, let's do roll call. No, we can't do roll call, you don't have a form.
Well, you've got a form.
Well, we don't, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, four.
Yeah, we have four.
That's enough, I thought we needed five.
How many is total, seven, right?
Eight.
There's five.
We're missing Tammy, we're missing.
We're missing Tammy, we're missing Steve, and we're missing Ken Dunbar.
Is both Steve and Kurt voting members or?
Yes.
It's Bart the one that we don't, is the one that is.
You're gonna think of joining the planning commission?
She's from Richmond, or she was in Richmond. This is my daughter.
Tammy, Steve, Ken Dunbar, who else?
Dunbar.
Or Dunbar, he never comes, I don't know why we even add him on here.
I have Tammy.
I have Tammy, Tammy, Steve, Ken Dunbar.
So actually, I think I have to really start the meeting, we have to add time here. But, but if you want, instead of just, you know, we can, we can go over the homework here.
Oh, that's what Steve left?
Yeah, as long as we're not making a decision on anything, we can discuss this stuff, okay? We don't have the form, but if you, I mean, I just started reading all this stuff, so.
Oh, you just got one, right, did you get one?
I have one, I can put everybody that was here.
Thank you. How is this different from the other, is that something we can talk about?
Yeah, you know, that's.
From the initial?
Right.
What was the tweak?
Well, it's actually, from my reading, is adding a section, so. A proposed amendment language reads that the city of Memphis is hereby amending by adding a section to the number 150.055A1, which section reads as follows, nonconforming use of a lawfully occupied building or land at the effective date of this planning, plan or amendment thereto. In the commercial overlay zoning district that does not conform to the use regulations of the district in which it is located is considered R1A, which uses permitted in this Memphis Michigan City ordinance zoning districts, codes R1A and C1. In addition to the uses permitted herein, all nonconforming uses and structures located in the C1 commercial overlay district that exited prior to the adoption of the, of an ordinance which made them nonconforming shall be permitted only to the extent, extent nonconforming is allowed under the ordinance, including as allowed pursuant to section 150 dot, dot, dot. Nothing herein shall be construed as to follow for the expansion of any nonconforming use or structure, or to allow an abandoned or nonconforming use of the structure to be reestablished.
And that's?
So the intent of this sec, amending, amending the section is code number 31. So nonconformies may continue.
And that is the same that's on page two. Current proposal update on 31st, and would be amended. Isn't this?
Why don't we just put it in Greek and then I'll just.
Yeah. I'm following it, it's something that happened, I get it now, the first, the first one, but how is the second one different?
Is this the same thing, is this?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, because it says it's updated.
So, if you look at the dates on this, this is originally drafted in March, and then.
June 31st.
Right, it was the last thing that Steve.
Oh, here we go.
That's where he submitted it.
Here we go, I will advise it to something along these lines, by any sentence.
We have a form, so.
So now we have a form, so I guess we need to call the meeting in order to know we've already done that, right?
We did pledge allegiance and we're doing the roll call if we have the roll. You're gonna call that, so we can prove it.
So, so we'll go back to.
No, the secretary does.
Okay. Riley?
Oh.
Eider?
Here.
Marther?
Yeah.
Marther, yeah, nothing here, okay, so. Absent is Tammy, Steve, Ken Dunbar, and Bart Dunbar.
I'll make the motion to, excuse me, the officers.
I'll second it.
Motion carries. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Adoption or amendment of agenda, we have, I did have one thing I wanted to add. Ken Dunbar asked about adding in, I guess in the last meeting, he asked about the June. The June date of making sure we have all of our new officers in place. I know we just did that not too long ago, but that's what's, that's what's in the, in the, in the format, I know he's looking at being able to follow that, you know, correctly, and also there was something about having our whole year planned out as far as at least listed the meetings, there are some meetings that we have to have.
And I'm going back to the text from Ken. Code of ordinance 31.004, officer subsection A reads, chairperson. The commission shall elect a chairperson from the membership annually at its first meeting after the first Tuesday in July. Said chairperson shall be eligible for reelection, there is nothing about vice chair, because it's a newly created position, but all officers should be decided upon at the same time, so.
Can we add that on during unfinished business?
And then the thing is, is in his note here, it says after the first Tuesday in July.
That's today.
Well, that's right.
The first meeting after the first Tuesday in July, that's today.
Today, okay.
So we just add that to unfinished business? Did he bring this up at the last meeting, that I was looking at the?
I don't.
See, that would go under new business, I'm guessing.
All right, what, what do you want me to put under new business?
Um, discussing Dunbar's.
Officers?
Officer vote and regularly scheduled. Secretary Dunbar motions to cancel the 28th meeting and to have commission meet at the next regularly scheduled meeting on July 12th.
Yeah.
Okay, that was just that, okay.
That was, that was just so we could skip that last meeting. All right.
So all, all approved of that change to the agenda?
I think, maybe, maybe somebody said it.
Somebody said?
I said.
Second. All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Any disagree? Any motion carries? Approved minutes from June 14th, there's also a note here to amend the minutes from May 24th. Is that something anybody can?
That might have been the thing where he had you, he had you absent, and then he had you calling the meeting to order, so that was pretty tricky to do that. Maybe, was that the change, I'm not sure what. I don't know.
I didn't know what the change was.
Well, so maybe he made the correction that the.
Maybe he made.
That it was called, well, the meeting was called, or by either.
Because they were for.
And, and you were.
Yeah, you were absent, then you showed up a little bit later, this is probably what he's talking about.
I mean, it looks like they're ordered to meet.
Okay, it looks like they were already approved, so. I make a motion that we approve the meetings from June 14th?
I'll second it.
What happened to May 24th?
That looks like those were already approved.
Yeah, that was already approved.
If you look at.
Oh, I think, I think that's, yeah. That's what happened.
Yeah, Kurt made a motion that day.
Also, June 13th?
June 14th.
June 14th.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Anything? Motion passes. Citizen comments regarding any agenda and non-agenda of government actions today. This is the point where we're gonna.
Yeah, if you guys want something, say something.
This is the time, yeah.
Okay, you want to talk with me on the weather or the? Okay, I'll talk about that.
The tree next door to me, it's reducing nuts now, and I have to pick up thousands of them, I'm not on before I can even have it mowed. I got, I, at home, I got two big leaf bags full of nuts, is there anything that's gonna be done, and there's another tree that's gonna fall over, and there's a dead pine tree that falls going into.
Well, Joni.
What's your name and where?
One, two, four, seven, eight, Fort Pratt Road.
Three, four, seven, eight, four, eight, four.
Yeah, right next to you. But next, next to the light, the other light.
So, can, can I ask, Joni, what does this have to do with the city's planning?
No, nothing, am I at the wrong meeting?
Yeah, you should have been at a city council meeting last night. This is, this is, this is, this is the city's planning commission.
I was told, okay, I was told to come to the planning council.
The meetings, the city council meetings are normally the first Tuesday of the month, but because the first Tuesday of the month was July 4th.
I didn't know that. They had a meeting for last night. You know, I'm sorry, giving wrong information.
Yeah.
Well, I don't see why she's here for that, she lives like next to McGuire Street, which isn't really the street. Who was it, you said, Bear, what's his name?
Jimmy Bear.
The person that probably the owner next to reform like Siska, who was given 10 feet of the property and all that, she was promised a minimum 10 feet, but then he set up with the 25 feet property, this was back in 2017, and nothing's ever happened with that, and she's maintained it for 34 years.
Yeah, so this was promised by?
Jenny Bear.
Jamie Norwood, she works for the city.
I know he doesn't, but he did promise it, and I just wanted to be sure that that was on there, because what had happened was someone plowed, they, that, McGuire Street is nothing now, it's all grass and rocks and rocks, they went and plowed it and piled it on the property I've been taking care of, took me three and a half hours, and I had to put it around the tree in the park, you know, and I just, you know, and I put topsoil in there and I put grass in, and it's just a wreck, it was just a wreck.
Okay, I, I.
It's horrible.
I understand, but I think this is something that you'd really wanna bring to city council.
City council.
And, and the planning.
That council planning wouldn't be a part of.
But the 10, the 10 feet thing.
The 10 feet.
And that was, you know, that was one of those, that was Jamie and Dan Weaver and.
Yeah, they gave it to the people, gave it to like, yeah.
Yeah, I think the, the property was given to.
The previous owner.
Before Siska.
It was the previous owner.
Okay, so.
Actually, two, two owners before that.
When it's abandoned, it will be abandoned down the center.
Yeah.
That 10 feet has nothing to do with it.
If, if, if.
Yeah, 10 feet.
If we abandon it, it's gonna be abandoned down the middle.
Yeah.
So the 10 feet that he has will have nothing to do with where it's gonna be split, it's gonna be split down the center.
Okay.
We're, you know, we've been trying to do it for two years, three years, no, about more than that, five years at least. We were told that it had to go to a circuit court judge, he had to make the decision, and it was gonna cost us like 10 to 15 thousand dollars. I would like to see it just abandoned, roads have been abandoned here before in the past, the road next to my house was supposedly abandoned. I, I wanna just do it, and I'm glad you brought it up, and I'm gonna put it on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
You know, you might wanna talk to Bart about this, I don't know, something about loss of funds if we abandon the streets, I don't know how much we're talking about.
We'll find out.
So you can actually, so, I mean, the streets, so the streets have been, you can basically acquire it into your property, is that what you're saying?
We would divide it up between the two adjoining property owners, there's also one between Jason's house and his neighbor, and I believe there's one down further that's like in the back by the ball diamonds of the Lions Club.
I mean, if, yeah, if you, if you look at the map, there's a whole bunch of streets that aren't there, I mean, it was almost like a planned subdivision, ball field.
In fact, we actually made an agreement with the Lions Club that if they ever sold the property, that the Lions Club would give the city an easement, I believe, so that they would have access to the property without driving like through, because the, the property line is actually like right in front of the building. So the city owns the park side, and the Lions Club actually owns from the front of the building, the parking lot, and then the 10 acres or eight acres or whatever it is across the parking lot. So there's actually already in place an agreement that it's the Lions Club, it's, it's in the deed, if the Lions Club, for whatever reason, was to sell the property, which is not where the building is, because the city was given that property, but the rest of the property, that part of the agreement would have to be that there would be, I believe it's 10 feet, it might be 15 or 20, I don't remember exactly, but there's already in the, in the deed that it says that there's an easement of so much footage that will go to the city with the property, with, and be a joint to their property, so that part's already done. I, I would say we just put it up to city council, let them vote on it, I'm not sure about how much money we get out of those roads, but to me, it's, it's a problem for you, it's a problem for whoever owns in the house next door to you, it's a problem for Jason and his neighbor's house, it's a problem for the other house, because what ends up happening is that if you get a neighbor who doesn't wanna take care of that part of the, their property, then you end up having to take care of it.
Didn't we, the property next to Jason's house, didn't we divide that in half?
Still old street.
Just talked about it, it was, it's been talked about, Jamie talked us out of it, he said it had to go to circuit court judge.
Oh, it was that planning that we talked about it, and then, oh, and then it was another.
It's, it's been going on for, since I can remember.
I was told that the property next to me, that used to be a road, was abandoned because cars were sliding into M19. I've not seen any proof of that, so I don't even know if that part was, I mean, there's still sidewalks down there on that old road, it's all overgrown, you, you know, you have a hard time driving a car down there, but as far as I know, I'm not sure if it's even a lane, I don't know.
So Joan, you're talking about McGuire Street, which runs.
Between her house.
East side of.
It's the east house.
It's the east side of your property.
There used to be a garb rail there, that's gone, right?
No, it's still there.
So the garbage still.
They asked if I wanted, they, this is what they asked, would you still leave the, what is left up, and I said, yeah, I may as well, maybe it'll keep, you know, people from coming through, because when I first moved here, people were flying through, they almost hit my granddaughter, and she was little, they were flying through the road, one man flew into the ditch, and you can see it's still bent there, it was horrible, I mean, they were just tearing up everything, and I just kept fixing it up, and you know, and then that stopped, when the signs went up, that, you know, no parking on there. And it just, I don't, you did it here, it was a blessing, it really was a blessing, because they were driving to the back of my house, and I don't like to complain, but it just gets frustrating. But now the people are wonderful, I mean, they're in the park, they're, they stay where they're supposed to be, I had no problems with the people, and they can play ball back there, they've been great.
Right, so this is something that can be filed, well, shouldn't you come to the city council meeting and discuss? Maybe because of her aging, she's been maintaining that for 34 years, it's kind of, does she have, if it's not going to be, well, she should no longer have to maintain that, she's always worried about having to mow the lawn, now she's paying someone to mow the lawn, it is quite a bit of property, when you're paying someone to do that, and then if it's not maintained in the winter, somebody's coming in, you know, with mom, knowing her, they're piling up rocks, which goes on her property, now she's out there picking up rocks, she shouldn't have to do that.
It was horrible, it was a mistake.
And that got plowed by Bart, because, believe it or not, it was one of those with the county, looking on their GPS.
Right.
Said you're not clearing your roads.
Right, so if they have it somehow.
So he'd go in there and plow it and.
It was too deep.
So whatever, right, so whatever plows and all that, every bunch of rocks are going to her property, she's gotta pick up, we just call the city, and the city brings somebody out, let's say if it does not, is, I guess, abandoned, then it's call the city, and the city has to bring somebody else to pick the rocks up, correct? Okay, because I mean, she's out there doing that, and she should not be doing that at her age, and just, like the whole thing, maintaining that for 34 years, you know, based on being a small town, you would think it would just be abandoned, and then the property would go in her name, which is really.
I know, I mean, it's.
I understand.
If you go between my house and Pratt Road, that's all city property, I've maintained it for the last 23 years.
I don't, I want it to look nice, you know.
Want it to be nice, but also, you know, you shouldn't have to do that, so if there's something, we can bring up that, because the next city meeting, which would be the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday.
Of August.
Of August.
Yep.
But that's what we issued.
Joan, I can't remember who else's name.
Wheeler.
Wheeler.
W H P G.
That's August 1st, correct?
I know, it's like every time.
Yes.
Correct, yes. And that's a 7, Ken, or 6, or?
7.
7, okay.
I appreciate your time for this, because it's just frustrating, and then I'll bring up a pop.
No problem, if you ladies don't wanna hear it, we'll banter over the language there.
I thought she was just really bored or something.
I would see what life would be if you. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Good seeing you, Joan.
Good seeing you too.
Thank you.
Eric.
Eric, can I see Eric, I'm a shot.
Um, communications, I don't think we have any, but I'm aware of. Anybody? Okay. Uh, new business? Going right to unfinished business?
New business, do we need that?
New business was the option.
Oh, that is, new business, okay, I thought you put that under old, okay, new business. So Ken's thought on, on that, and you read the text.
Well, Ken is currently our secretary.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, um, when he said that, now, I, I got a call from Donna, but I think this was Jim, I don't think it was July 1st, asking, do you still wanna keep doing this, I know I get that call from time to time, I'm what, was wondering, is that taking care of that? Is that what that, those calls are allowed because it happens once a year?
Um, as far as wanting to keep doing it, I mean, it's one of those, it's like, you know, and I'm not sure when everybody's terms are up, I mean, you know.
So they should all meet at the same time, though.
Donna called me while I was staying.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't think that everybody's term's on the same.
Well, was that Eric, was that talked about last night at the council meeting?
What?
No.
About the officers and all that, or the planning? Because she called me, when did she call you?
Well, I wanna say it was Jim.
Yeah, I mean, she called me, too, to ask me.
There was nothing on the agenda last night.
Don't they normally, doesn't she normally say?
To reappoint.
To reappoint.
There was no reappointments last night, so it could be that terms aren't up yet.
Okay, so reappointments and officers, that's actually two different things?
Well.
Right, the city council appoints people to the planning commission, and you guys decide for the officer.
And she makes, she makes a determination of when to call, we must have come over this.
And, you know, I mean, and from past experience, and I don't remember Bart, but it was one of those, it's like, once we had a chair, until we had a turnover where somebody left, and then we had to reappoint somebody, because the whole time that I was on, on planning, I was a secretary. You know, for 13 years, I was a secretary, I was, I was never like reappointed, I was reappointed to the board, you know, as far as when my term was up.
So actually, as a group here, we should, we, we need to be appointing the officers.
So if we do that every year at this meeting in July.
Which would be today.
Then we just do it, but I'm gonna make a motion that we just did that, but we should, that's when we'll do it again, is.
When did we do it? We didn't do it.
We didn't, it went in January, didn't we?
It was January, I guess, so like, we would.
Yeah, because it pretty much, because January, I mean, you were starting over pretty much as a brand new fresh board, and that's when you became president, and Kenny, secretary, we don't have a vice chair.
If we don't do it till next July, then we're not doing it every year, if we did it in January.
Well, do we wanna reconfirm what we're doing now, or do we wanna redo this?
I think we should do that, I think we should pick our officers, well, Ken's not here, so.
I was gonna say, if you're gonna nominate somebody to stay in the position, it'd be nice if you had a full board here to.
Yeah, this, this is hard, because we don't ever seem to have a full board anymore.
Yeah.
You know, why, why don't I just make a motion to table that, and we can have some discussion on where we're at on this, as far as the numbers. The membership, when their, you know, term is done, you know, who, who do we wanna be, you know, do, do you really feel that you have to have a vice chair? I don't know, I mean, in the past, in the past, if we didn't have the chair here, myself as secretary, I would take over running the meeting. I mean, it's, it would be nice to have a vice chair, and the whole, my, this is my thought, because as secretary, you're sitting there, you're concentrating on everything that's going down, trying to make sure everything is recorded, and not run the meeting and.
That's why I think a vice chair is actually important.
Yeah, a council that I'd, that's always.
So, you know what, I would, at this point in time, then, Leslie, you're, you know, you've already been voted in as a chair, Kenny is our secretary, and if you wanna create a new position as vice chair, then we could nominate somebody to be vice chair.
And that's, he's been, that's kind of what we did way in January.
So then, so then, at this meeting, what we can do is.
Aren't you the right chair?
So then, what I'll do at this point in time is nominate Tom Air to be our vice chair. Can I get his support?
Support official, support. Support official, like, I'm wondering if this is coming from the, the language is now escaping me, because there's not a, our rules.
It's.
We talked about that, it's like it's in the code, but we don't have it.
It's not there, it's a, it's a new position that we're creating, so that.
Right.
We have somebody to direct.
Yeah, because you can, you can create a position within.
It's not required.
Right, my books at home, I'm not gonna work them out like that.
Bylaws, that's what I'm saying, that's it, you know, because that's something that we were gonna, we'd be working on, I think we said we were gonna work on that.
I can't do this, I'm so confused, I don't know what I'm doing. All right, so I, so I'm gonna, I'm going to.
So I made a motion to nominate.
And I supported.
And you supported it, so you've got that.
Okay, we all.
So now, we need to do, before we go any further, let's take a vote on it.
Okay, all in favor of?
Aye.
Tom as vice president officially, or vice chairman officially.
So then, I'll, I'm going to not, I will make a motion to nominate Leslie as chairperson.
Oh, she's, she is our chair, but if you wanna reaffirm.
Well, Tom is our vice chair.
Yeah, we affirm Leslie as our chair.
Let's reaffirm.
Okay, so.
I thought we were.
I make a motion to reaffirm Leslie as our chair.
All right.
Okay.
Right, I mean, you were already our vice chair.
Right, correct.
At the same time that you were appointed chair, so don't we have to do all this?
Can we change that motion to be, let's reaffirm all positions as stated in January, I mean, this is the bit, say.
Because I think, I think Tammy was first vice chair, but then she had other commitments, and then I said I, I would take that position.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, I don't think this should be that difficult. I mean, I don't know. I don't think this should be that difficult. It's just, we're just gonna say things are staying the way they are with the people that are in the in these positions.
I make a motion. That as far as positions go, that we. That we continue. The current positions of Leslie, Tom. And and um.
Ken Dunbar.
And Ken Dunbar in their positions.
That's second.
Until July of next year.
My second then.
Okay.
All proof?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. The second part of that is. Chairperson. We are required to meet in July, tonight's meeting, October, January and April, but outside of that is up to our discretion. I'm gonna say I never knew that there were requirements. I always thought it was just when we were called.
Um, well, what it used to be is that we met on a monthly basis and it was the first Wednesday of the month, so it was the Wednesday following the city council meeting.
And and what we used to do is we'd come here and if there was nothing on the agenda, we would sit here for a half hour.
Then when we went to a point where there was nothing on the agenda, then we basically became on call.
Okay, so where is this? We are required to meet in October, January and April. It was a quarterly, quarterly that we're required to meet.
Supposedly.
I consider the chart.
I believe so.
Okay.
It's in, I can look it up tonight.
And I, my suggestion is that, you know, we should still be meeting at least monthly while we're hammering this out.
Oh, for sure, a monthly.
Yeah, definitely, especially with the master plan.
So I don't think, I don't think that we need to make any, take any action on that.
As far as what that, well, his other, his second section was, I would like to decide upon a schedule that would work for the next fiscal year. And I don't think that's out of the question, especially since we're working on this to be able, cause I know sometimes I'm like, which year, which year?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we meet on the first Wednesday.
Oh, first, we're gonna change it to the first Wednesday?
Well, that's where we're at. I don't know where the second Wednesday.
No, today's the second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday, I'm sorry. I I'm screwed up because.
I know. I know, I know exactly why, yeah, I know.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we that the uh planning commission continue to meet on the second Wednesday of the month.
Support.
Aye, second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Each month. Yeah, cause right now we have, do have something to talk about.
Okay, do we want to, in just, in the interest of making the net this next twenty twenty-three easy for everybody to follow. Identify the second dates of each month that we're gonna meet, since we're doing that for the city, for the plan.
So that would be August eighth?
Eighth is the second, or so, the eighth or the second.
No.
Wednesday is the ninth, so.
August ninth.
August ninth, September thirteen.
Oh, okay, but we're gonna also do the.
Is that what you want us to do?
We wanna do the second, so we wanna have two meetings a month is what we've been wanna do.
Well, I thought that we were just gonna go to one.
We're gonna go down to one.
That's what we voted on last time, let's go down to one.
Instead of trying to do two?
Yeah.
And just take, let's just take as long as it's gonna take. Gotcha, okay.
And then just one of those, if you feel like we wanna expedite something, then we can add a meeting.
Right, we can call them.
Got you, I got you. Okay, that's what I missed. I missed that part, okay.
And what is that, October eleventh?
I got it, I got it. I'll put them up.
Okay.
November eighth.
I'll 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 make a list.
Alright.
Okay, great. Okay. Great, um, you'll move on to the commercial district overlay language.
The master plan, what was it? Uh, in the text, it was something about. Somebody had section fifteen or what was that?
That's something from, was that something from Weaver?
That's Steve Weaver and that's I think relating to this. He wanted to help work. Yeah.
That's the.
Cause he spoke to the uh, he rewrote page fifteen.
Oh, that's.
For the group to consider. Oh, that's another thing. That's a, that's another thing too, so. But so I guess there's two things here he's talking about. The first being that commercial overlay language. And we were in the middle of just taking a look at that when you walked in, Tom, because Alan Francis said he would revise what he originally had. To add in a sentence in addition to the uses permitted. All nonconforming uses and structures located in the C one commercial overlay district that existed prior to the operation of the ordinance, which made them nonconforming. Shall be permitted only to the extent nonconformity is allowed under this ordinance, including as love pursued the section one fifty. Nothing herein shall be construed as to allow for expansion or any nonconforming use or s- or structure or to allow an abandoned nonconforming use or structure to be reestablished.
So it says not confirming. It should say not conforming, but just a typo.
That's it. I think that's just a typo.
So this, so we're we're supposed to be voting on setting this to council?
I don't know, that's not confirming absolutely.
The thing is Steve has done is for information only.
This is what he's trying, wants to try to to approve to send to the city council, so there's. The handful of places that are nonconforming right now.
Yeah, cause it says you could do it.
Can continue to be nonconforming.
Yeah, it says you could do it as information only or add to the agenda for discussion action.
So.
So we need to talk about this before, I think we passed.
So the funeral home can just go ahead and be a, and do what they want over there?
No.
That's that's that what this is about. This is about, this is about clarifying, so.
I just like Sally Morgan as a, as an example, because her home has a rental on Main Street. Okay, she's got a rental in the back of her house.
Right.
And she can continue to use that as she, as a rental if she sells it.
Cause she's not conforming right now because she is not zoning residential multiple. She's zoned as residential.
And she could sell it like that. Somebody, so she keeps value in her property.
As residential.
Residential multiple, but if she sells it or abandons it.
Well, is 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 it zoned, is it zoned residential multiple or just residential and she's just not complying?
That's that's what it is. She's not complying.
She's not complying, so she can sell it, she could not sell it as residential multiple.
No, 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 that's, that's what I used to think. That's what I used to think, but this is the way Steve had said is this has been grandfathered in like. Because it's prior to when we made that zoning change, that you couldn't have multifamily. There's also the other house, that house on the corner across next to the church, Benson, whatever, it's like a multifamily.
Yep.
You know what I'm talking about? So if that person wants to sell that house, they could sell it as a multifamily. Because they're nonconforming and they had been nonconforming all the time, all along. But if they sell it to somebody who takes out all those apartments and turns it into a single family home, it can never go back to multifamily.
Right, which is what I had a crossroad for me.
Yeah. So there's like a few of those and so maybe like the apartments down across from the holy family church, that they kind of be considered nonconforming because they're multifamily building?
It it doesn't go that far.
Oh, it doesn't? But that hallway commercial overlay?
I think it stops just before that, yep.
Okay.
I thought it ended at, I was thinking it was ending at Pratt or Kurt Tech and it was residential.
I'm not sure, but for some reason they're.
The whole, the commercial overlay district is M nineteen.
Right.
But it's, it doesn't go all the way down to across from the church. I I don't think, I don't think it does. It seems to me that that was excluded.
I know, exclude those two. That's the other thing too is.
Because that's, that's not a house that was turned into a multifamily unit. It's an apartment complex of separate units. It's almost like a hotel, really. Like a motel, actually.
Yeah.
I don't think that, but I don't think that property counts as.
Okay, so I'm thinking of like Sally Morgan, that other, that other corner, I don't.
Right.
So given that language, the funeral home, could that, that could, somebody could open up businesses as a funeral home if they wanted, right?
Right.
Well, yeah.
But they can't open it up as apartments or as a multifamily home. And that was the problem. I understand that. Did I understand that part right?
It's already commercial.
Correct, but it can't be multifamily.
No.
Because it never was a family.
They could ask for it, but.
It never was a multifamily.
Right, it's a commercial property.
So that's what this is.
Right, if it was like, if it was a multifamily and then they changed it over to a funeral. I think they could change it.
They can't go back.
No, no.
Can't go back.
It was never, it was never a.
No, I'm saying as an example.
Okay, what was the example?
Example, because it's commercial, you can't change it to residential multiple.
Right, but if it was a residential multiple and it changed.
It could be changed commercial, but it can't go back to residential multiple.
So once it's commercial, it stays commercial.
Or once it's single family, a single family home, it stays that way.
Single family stays single family.
Well, how was this woman allowed to run out the back of her place if?
She's always been allowed to.
By who?
She's grandfathered.
She's been grandfathered for all these years?
No, cause it was allowed. We only made that.
It was allowed until. Until.
The zoning did, and we only made that change after this seat, after this uh master plan, when we said no more multifamily.
But the master plan is not the ordinance.
No.
But that ordinance, but that ordinance happened, didn't it afterwards?
Not that I know of.
No, I don't think so. I think she's just been non, she's just been nonconforming.
She's just not conforming. She's just not conforming.
I thought she's nonconforming now because there's multiple, multiple family.
And since, since that master plan went in, she added the mother law.
Oh, no, that was before. She's had that before. That's what I'm saying. She's.
Twenty years ago?
Yeah, she's grandfathered in because it's before this, like that other property.
Okay, I didn't know.
Like that other property. It's not, she's doing work on it now, but it's always been there. It's always been there.
Okay.
It used to be a store. It used to be like a shop, I thought.
Like Sally's house you're talking?
Yep, that's the garage.
That was a bakery at one time. Somebody called me down with a bakery.
Yeah.
That's the way Steve, at 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 the initial um submission that he had, had explained it to me was it's. To stop people from being able to put the the um. Multifamily in, but also to protect the people that already have their properties.
So then, so then, um. With all the considerations made and you know, trying to read the the language back before, Eric, have you seen this at all?
What?
Have you seen this at all?
What is it?
This, all this stuff from Eric. I mean, I I I, you know, because you've got a lot more, uh, uh, much better legal mind than myself.
No, I've never seen it.
I haven't got a clue all of our these minutes up.
So I basically, what I've seen is that if you look at the page here, it's all in bold. That's where he's looking to have a recommendation.
To go sit, to go.
To go to city council. Make a recommendation to city council to uh update the uh.
We passed this. We passed this a couple, already a couple months ago. Ken Dunbar called a special meeting, or a act called me. I called special meeting to relook at that. And we relooked at it again with Steve. Ken Dunbar was was concerned about that language. He wasn't sure if it was. Appropriate and that's where I get a little, a question that I have for with planning. It's going to go through to council and you guys would probably be sending it to the attorney anyway?
Well, according to what I'm reading here, the attorney already looked at it.
Correct, Steve went, made that, took that step to do because we rescinded it like back in February.
So, so actually if you look at it, I mean, the response from Alan is basically laying out this language right here.
Exactly, which is addy, addy, little extra.
Yeah.
Because we had and I remember when Steve brought this to us and we're all looking at it and we're like, this is Greek. Please explain this to me. I don't understand this.
Right.
And we passed it in the understanding that this was. Language that he had taken from the rest of the code book. And would we go to city council and then go to the attorney.
So it, the one, it's the quote, the, that's, that's.
June what, June thirty?
It's this.
June thirty first.
It's the one that's all bold.
Right.
So are, so should we be voting on this about sending it to?
Well, if we're gonna do anything, what we would do is take a uh. A a motion to recommend to city council. Recommendation to city council. To amend. Uh, section one five zero point zero zero or point zero five five A one. So make that a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Second to it?
Ken. The second part was Steve's homework. He rewrote the demographic and economic considerations page. That's page fifteen. You're gonna kind of like read that and look at it as our homework?
Yeah, without having it in front of us. Then again, I you know, I like to have Ken here because he's the one that's uh, he's, he's the one that's been diving with the rewrites along with.
I'm gonna make a motion that we tabled the demographic and economic considerations to the last meeting.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, yeah.
Yeah, Ken's great with words.
Yeah. Has anybody got a chance to get on the Dropbox and look at how it's?
This is Dropbox, you people speaking.
Well. It's actually pretty cool. That's pretty cool.
Well, that's how we have the master plan. I could see Ken, Ken updates the master plan. Uh, and then he puts it in Dropbox. We did last meeting, Kurt, we handed the projector up here and you can read, everybody was reading it. Going through it, he says, oh, well, look at here, we missed this here, we're doing together. And then Ken takes that, makes his notes. Updates it, revises it, and then he highlights whatever in red. Um, the changes that were made. And it just makes, you know, that's.
It's the final, it's the, it's the common copy that will eventually.
Right. Right, so instead, instead of rewriting section and rewriting this section and praying, praying, praying and killing trees.
I I respect your procedures.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I should tell my daughter about that next time. She'll, she'll leave the dipstick on your dashboard.
So as far as the master plan goes, as we're talking about that, I had a little, my homework was about traffic. In section, I don't know what that page was. Existence of or existing on a news?
Traffic flow.
Oh, infrastructure transportation, section four. That's what it was. Traffic analysis and improvement. And I said, I would look into that and see how that needed to be updated. And when I did. I had questions because when you, when you read this, it's talking about the problems. In the traffic and road improvements needed and that type of infrastructure that are needed in the city. As a planning commission, are we allowed to, how do we identify all those things in a specific way? I feel like I've gotta come to, you gotta come to city council and say, what are those things? Or is that where we are supposed to identify that? That's my question. Because when you read this, um, pages twenty-three and twenty-four, um, I know this all came from.
Yeah, this, they, this, you know, for the guys that do planning, so. I don't know.
I looked at like maybe how you could sort of update some of, some of this and I felt um, like I was not.
I.
In a way that I was not informed enough to be able to say, and what has happened?
And or, you know, it's one of those, it's like, without having it in my head here and I don't have it in front of me, is one of those, it's like, this is something that we just eliminate? Does it need to be part of our master plan?
That's a, that's a question too, but um, as far as like the use of this, of the map this plan, I mean, talking about infants, the infrastructure seems to me like it would be an important thing to have in the plan. Because when you read this. Because when you read this from ten years ago, this is where there seem to be some problems.
Well, you got a, oh, you highlighted.
I don't, I don't know that any of us is qualified enough to write that.
No.
But it's a question that I have. It's like, how do we, what do we incorporate?
That came from like people in the, at the county.
What section is that?
It is in section four, twenty-three and twenty-four. There's, they're listing a few things here of, um, below is preferred list of transportation projects that the city of Memphis seeks to accomplish over the lifetime of this Memphis plan. Bell River from Pratt to Boardman, and there's a dollar figure. Boardman to Northern City Limit, and there's a dollar figure.
What page are you on?
Twenty-five.
Which would be, which would be three times the.
Are those, but are those, has any of that been done? It's Pratt Road crosswalk and not approved.
Oh, yeah, I did write something down on that one. Are these numbers that need to be made?
Yeah, like Pratt Road crosswalk, that was a, uh, that was a Dan Weaver thing. He wanted to put a crosswalk in with the sign over the road and the flashing lights and.
That's where, at the.
At the corner by my house.
For Pratt Road?
Right there.
For people to cross M nineteen.
To go to the, um.
Because that's like, you know, if, if you're on my side, that's where the sidewalk ends. And so to get across the road, you would have.
At that time, McComb County was giving those away. They put, put them on Grashit and stuff.
Right.
Because it says.
You push the button and then the lights flash and, you know, you have the big crosswalk sign and.
Okay. So, so this is where.
Doesn't happen.
The city can make some money off of that, because if, um, Ann Arbor has them, Ann Ar- Ann Arbor, it's a big ticket. If that, somebody hits that crosswalk sign, and you don't, and you don't stop.
And you don't stop. I think the implication here is the fact that you're gonna put out a state highway. I don't know about that, that I think that.
Yeah.
Grashit's a state highway?
Huh?
Grashit's a state highway.
Yeah.
It says end up approved. I don't know whether that meant, did it prove the plan that had been submitted by day of?
The sign is, this, those type of signs are approved by the state.
Okay.
Do we have something like that for the school though, some type of crossing sign for the school? Besides just a little sign that shows kids, you know, being impacted by carpings and?
So this, that's, that kind of thing is what should go in that here, that we could speak to of things that we think are pretty good.
You realize this is just a wish list, right?
Exactly, that's what it is. Yeah. Yeah, that's why it's a wish list.
Boardman Road to Northern City Limit, what are they saying?
However, what this is, is I think is just as is, like, what's the existing, like, yeah, there's not a place saying there's not a.
Port Road to Northern City Limit, what, what are they talking about?
I don't know, because it goes to east and west.
No, she said Bell, I think she said Bell River to the northern.
Bell River. Bell River.
Bell River from Pratt to Boardman, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and twenty-five cents.
What's the next line?
Hundred and thirty what?
Hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Four hundred to Northern City Limit, two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen.
Where's the Northern City Limit? They're still talking about Bell River. From Boardman to Northern City Limit.
Talking about Bell River.
Oh, it says Boardman to Northern City Limit.
Yeah.
Right, from Boardman to the Northern City Limit on Bell River.
Road rehabilitation between M nineteen and Bell River Road.
Can you imagine that you could get about ten feet down for two hundred thousand or not?
That was just a resurface to Seal Coda.
That was the sorry, went completely to.
Right, that was to Seal Coda.
So, I'm just like wondering, because it's like, this is supposed to be something that somebody looks at. There's actually some rather ominous language in here. And maybe that's what we want to. Without proper maintenance and advancements, Memphis's infrastructure could slip into a state of disrepair, which would usher in a staggering amount of financial hardship.
We're there.
No.
We're there.
The city of Memphis is committed to implementing capital improvements in a timely and economical fashion.
That's fine, Steve. That's the people from McComb County that were here helping us.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So this is what we depend on the county for, I mean, that's.
So, yeah, a little stiny kind of weirda. Where to go with this? The city's water and sewer system is another complex aspect of the infrastructure network encompassing the community well and the city's sanitary review system. They go on to talk about telecommunications. It has become evident that investment and improvements are needed.
Yeah, that's just not more of a place, huh?
As what's gonna happen. And then we make a wish list at the end of what we wanna do.
No, the whole, the whole thing is a wish list of what you'd like to see.
That's, that's what the whole.
It's not binding.
It's not, well, some of it's just saying, here's what exists.
The whole master plan is kind of a, a wish list, and it's, it's like you set it as a guide.
Right.
You know, I mean, what's in stone is our ordinances, you know, our own ordinances is what's set in stone. Planning, it's one of those, it's like, you know, we have to update this to keep the state happy, that we're looking at what we're doing. And what we need to do.
And see, section five is the goals and objectives. There, it's where our wish list starts, I feel like. Everything else is kind of like, here's what we got to work with right now. Maybe we, maybe it's gonna be a shorter plan than we have, like if you start, we start thinking we're dropping certain things, but I feel like we, like at least we need to. What state is our infrastructure in? I mean, that's what's.
Well, Bell River, well, you know.
Actually, the city has a, um, they did a survey of all the roads, uh, not that long ago, I think it was when I was mayor.
Okay.
Uh, it's a grade system of all roads.
Okay. So that's something we have access to. Did you talk to Donna? You got a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay, that sounds, to me, that sounds like that's what we go.
Yeah, that, that.
You could probably get rid of all the stuff that you were just talking about, and just put that in there, that this was degraded, you know, two thousand and eighteen or whatever.
So rewrite section, basically rewrite section four almost. Shorten it up a little bit, saying this is.
And you could probably just get a general idea of how much it costs per lane, per mile of road to, to redo.
It's one of those, if you look at this, if you remember the master plan that was before this, it was, it was garbage. We paid somebody twenty-five grand twenty-plus years ago to write it.
That's, I mean, in this summer here, what is it, two hundred and thirty thousand? I mean, that's a way off.
Like, what is that?
No.
I mean, that doesn't even cover, you know, so many yards of asphalt.
No, I mean, basically, I mean, if you think about it, the first time we looked at Bell River, no, actually, when we did the mechanic tree, wasn't it like two hundred and twenty dollars a foot? And that was just to do a resurface.
Yeah, the cost of materials, well, I'd say triple that.
Right, what they did by U K, it was like two hundred and twenty dollars a foot.
Do you think that's even like having those numbers in there is even like something we need to have, like?
No, I don't think we need to put them up to our mouse in there.
Unless you were doing that on your wish list for this.
I, I, I agree.
How current is that, you know?
It's not gonna happen. At the prices.
Really, just like, maybe just some updated statistics, maybe, about all the, all the rest, I mean.
What about, as far as like when they talk, the infrastructure is like our, the, the, the condition here of the sewer system?
The grading system of the sewer system, grading system of the wa- of the, of the.
Like, we should address that, at least just address.
Yeah, 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 how, you know, our, um.
Doesn't it say it was, it was done?
When I moved to Mem- when I moved to Memphis, I thought you couldn't have any more toilets in Memphis. Was kind of like the thing that I had in my head.
You couldn't, because the storm drains all drain into the lagoons.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, how is that different? Yeah.
We smoke tested the whole city. We figured out all the gutters and downspouts of storm drains that were attached to that system, and we diverted them to the storm drains, which now drain into the pond, which goes into the river.
The big pond.
So, the lagoons have completely been disconnected from all the downspouts and all the toilets.
Okay, so that's allowed to have more.
So the lagoons are strictly for the water treatment.
Building and more.
Just for sewer, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, I mean, it's like, if you look at it, it's like the school parking lot draining into our lagoons.
Oh, geez, okay.
So you look at the service area, that, and everybody got metered. So, once we started metering everybody, you know, they fixed their leaky toilets and stopped taking three-hour showers and even the.
Water would be brown.
Well, well, yeah, but that didn't accumulate in the, 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 the lagoons, but let's turn a spick on for the dog to drink out of in the toilet or the, the tub.
Right.
That kind of stuff stopped.
There were people that were running the hose in the bucket all day long, so that their dog would have water to drink. I know that for a fact, that happened.
That's what, you used to have free water in Memphis?
It was, it was, how many gallons that were used? Each house paid, there's like four hundred and seventy-five addresses, they divided it by four hundred and seventy-five, everybody paid their portion, whether it was a single little old lady, or it was somebody with eight kids.
Right, and it was actually, it was higher than, I mean, it's, it's higher than the rate right now. I mean, your minimum usage right now is, you know, right around a hundred and sixty-five bucks, right?
Yes.
For your total utility bill. And from what I remember back then, it was close to a hundred and eighty bucks, and we're talking about twenty-three years ago, when they put the meters in. And so, you know, it was one of those, if, if I go back to then, I think about it, you know, the first bill that I had was metered. And my neighbor next door wasn't metered yet, and he's got a hundred and eighty-five dollar water bill or utility bill, and mine was like a hundred and ten. And like, and he didn't want him to put the meter in. I'm like, why? It's just you.
Well, yeah, if you're doing a flat rate of a hundred and eighty-five, and he's not even using half of what the water is. It's, I can, I totally understand that. Oh, a hundred and eighty-five bucks a month? Oh, I'll leave my spick on. Don't worry about the labor cost.
Like you said, you know, with all the usage and the cutoffs from the downspouts and all that stuff, the lagoons went to the point where I think, you know, you go back a couple years ago when it was really dry, Bart's like worried about not having enough water in them.
Where are the lagoons that you don't mind going?
You know where the T-shirt shop is?
Jensen's, auto, Jensen's?
No.
The old?
No.
Okay, so, how did? Northeast of the Grapple pit.
Northeast of the Grapple.
So, so, yeah, so if you're, if you're heading out of town, there's the block and stone building, the last one in town, the big industrial jet building.
Okay.
Okay? There's a drive that goes past that. That goes back to lagoons. They're all gated and locked in.
Okay, so it's just going up to the drain tower.
Right here.
You can see them right there.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
There's a driveway that goes up here.
So, when, when you're, when you're heading up the hill out of town, like you said, there's the old stone-like building.
Okay.
It's a, it's a great big industrial building, but it's just, it's, it's blank. But there's a drive that goes next to that, that goes back to lagoons. So they are like, as far as the city.
Here's the quarry.
They are the.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the other side of the river for the quarry.
Yeah.
If you go back on the Memphis trails, I think you could probably see them.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, do I have access to that, where I can walk up there or?
No, the fence. I mean, you can walk up to the fence.
No, you can go around it. If you wanna go back there, you can, you can, you can, you can go back there. It's, it's not, it's not sealed off. The state wants us to seal it off, but you know, you're talking.
They've already fixed the fence a lot.
You know you're being recorded, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can walk back there.
Is there anything that?
I mean, you said, I've never seen the water system here in the city, so I thought it'd just be anything.
You'll be surprised. It's actually pretty nice back there.
Yeah.
Except for the geese.
Yeah.
Is there anything in the?
Well, geese is the most scratch.
Anything in the infrastructure, transportation that city council says we should be thinking about there at all? I mean, I know we can get this drive, the driving for the transportation one, for the roads.
That's something we're working on right now, I mean, as far as, uh, with construction, we're looking at, you know, doing, uh, the rest of Boardman Road from the M nineteen to.
Cole.
Cole Street. And, you know, so that'll be redone, and, um, we were looking at, starting to update, um, Robert and Lois, but that got kicked back out by the state because the water mains there are undersized. So we wanted to do that, but again, that was part of the project, and the state kicked it out. Why, I don't know.
Well, what's, what's going on with, um, Bell River? I keep hearing all these things about Bell River. I know Bell River's really bad. I mean, is that something that we have?
They're all bad.
It's, 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 it's all on the list to do.
Right.
It's all about money.
But aren't, is it, are we doing something with the water strip, with the, um, with the water over there off of Bell River? Okay.
The water?
Yeah, like the drainage system or whatever. I forgot what you call them.
The bridge over Mill Street is gonna be updated.
Yeah, where there's the, and it's not that old, but there's tubes that go under Mill Street.
Right.
And on the last engineering survey, I think they recommended within the next ten years.
They're falling, falling apart or whatever.
Well, they're.
No, it's not falling apart.
They're not falling apart, they're just, there's this, starting to show the.
The culverts don't meet in the mill. They're, so they're overlapped, and, um, so it's causing erosion.
Okay.
But you gotta remember that the water actually goes this way, and when you have a hard rain, that's where the water comes through under the bridge. That's where the problem comes in. It's not so much where the river is, it's where Sage Creek or whatever they call it, that goes by Larry's house, when it gets high water, that's, that's where the erosion comes from.
Right, so it's basically just run off into the Bell River, and that, that culvert right there from Mill Street?
Yeah.
Okay. I got it.
Okay, so we're gonna look at that, kind of like, like back to the fifteen, or look at fifteen.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at section four right there.
And then section three, existing land use and zoning. Um, I don't think that's updated at home.
So we're going back now?
The drop, I guess we are a little bit. Where we were with that. Section three.
Uh, any scrubs in there?
This is, I think, was, was, um, where we needed the current maps that you were gonna say for section, just Steve, what, how it exists right now, what are existing zoning yes.
Right, well, that's the other thing too, is when we, you know, the going over the map, um, that we have, I mean, it's, you know, you, you, you look back to, you know, we've got a lawsuit right now, and the map that they were going by, it was like, oh wait, that's a draft. And, you know, what Steve had here before the big one, that's not correct. I think the one sitting on the wall in the city office is, is not correct.
So we wanna have the correct one in here, though?
Right, it's a matter of getting that map corrected overall, because on the map that we have, you know, on the city site, you know, shows properties that are residential and are identified as industrial.
So how do we, who, who fixes that map and?
I, I think that's something that's, um, kinda having to sit down with, uh, Amber, who's taking over the assessing, and.
Oh, is she, she's Jamie's replacement?
Yes, so, yeah, Jamie is gone, so.
We're keeping it in-house, that's nice.
What's that?
We're keeping it in-house, that's nice.
Yeah.
Okay, so that kind of is what's still keeping, why we kind of saved our section for.
Yeah, and I mean, you're on master plan, and they've got five different maps, and you're talking about confusion.
Yeah, I know.
I know, it did, because you need to be this confused.
Let's go to one.
Yeah, it doesn't need.
Which, which we can, I mean, because now we do have the, the commercial overlay in there, it's just a matter of, you know. Yeah, it's one of those where there's something in question. What I did is called Amber and said, okay, what is this, what, what are we taxing this out at? What, what's that? Because it shows that it's industrial, but I see this is a residence. She's, oh, it is. Or it's an empty piece of land that was changed over to residential multiple years ago.
And this one here, this, well, your base point says, current zoning map. And I know you said something about up here being something different.
Right, so that, that orange piece, what does that show it as?
Uh, says it's residential multiple.
That's exactly what it is. But on the city's map, it's identified as.
Light industrial, because you and I talked about that. And then we have that new, that new area that we just.
Commercial overlay, yeah.
That we just rezoned for the, for the builders. Didn't we just rezone that now to R one N from R one A?
Oh, right, oh, yeah.
So that needs to be, that needs to be updated, but. And let's forget that.
So, when we, I feel like this, like getting through that, our reward is section five, goals and objectives, because this is where we like have a wish list of things. It can sit and brainstorm. What should we do?
Right.
So, we're gonna look at Steve's.
Goals and objectives, well, we're gonna annex into Richmond Township.
That'd be great.
Although we have to Weber.
How many times have we tried that? Yeah, remember that, basically, a hundred and seventy-five acres and balls.
Hundred and twenty, yeah, the hundred and twenty-one acres we wanted to annex.
Is that, I mean, we have the ability to do that, though, don't we, to, we can annex into a township, but a township cannot
Right.
take over a city. Take over a city.
Okay.
And I, yeah, so what Barb was talking about, there's a hundred and forty-one acres that's been for sale forever and a day, and we actually got a developer come in and proposed buying it. And I mean, it was gonna be this fabulous subdivision. There was gonna be uh, residential multiple in there. There was gonna be new houses. Part of it would have been on the city's infrastructure part. It would have been.
Yeah, there's gonna be stores.
Walls and septics, and there was gonna be stones. Oh, yeah. And then, of course, that's when you kind of, you know, that was like, everything took a crap.
But which would make a really great retirement little thing, you know, even like um.
Well, if you, you know, it's like, you, if you look at the, the thirteen acres at the north end of town. And, you know, the guy that came in here wanted to develop the condos. That's what we changed it to, from mobile home use to residential multiple. And they had beautiful plans for that. I'd be like, yeah, I want one of those condos down by the river, facing the woods.
Have you seen the ones in Port Huron now where the old Sears used to be? And it's a um, it's all, it's all rebuilt, but they have like some in- inside parking. The fro- the, the bottom layer is um, there's a bar and a music venue in there. There's a little grocery store and then some other little stores. And then it's just like two or three layers, condos on top. You know where Sears, Sears in town, old Sears, down by the yacht club, right behind.
Yacht club.
The main um, behind Main Street. And it really, really looks good, but it's that kind of thing where you could be retired and, or you know, they say a living there, and then there's just some opportunity for some businesses like underneath what you're doing.
Are you talking about the Wrigley Center?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, the Wrigley Center.
Have you been to Sterling Heights lately in regards to, you remember where the service merchandise used to be? The big tanny and the old Montgomery Ward? It's on the southwest corner of Hall and Shaner. Right in the center of the parking lot. Apartment building. Right in the center.
Yeah.
It took up about a majority of the parking lot. Right there by Two One Imports, and they put in an apartment building, a high-end apartment building.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you're close to everything right there.
Well, they just did that at um, at the Walmart at Hall Road in Greshit, behind my daughter's shop.
Oh, okay.
There's all those apartment buildings there, nine hundred square feet, twenty-five million dollars.
I'm, I'm gonna bug to get back to the uh.
Yeah, go forward.
That's our, that's our goals and objectives things. I'm like, they're not ideas. I'm like, what, what would be good?
Yeah.
I think we need to go, you know, you guys are missing trivia. You better hurry.
Okay.
So, uh.
All right.
So the, the thing is, is so the uh, actually, item number two is gonna go to city council.
And then we're also gonna look at this, at Steve's page fifteen. And come back to discuss that on August first.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. Is everybody here? So I'll make a motion to table uh, what's, we're doing the update, we're making a motion to go to city council, for item number two, the commercial.
We did that.
Okay.
We did that.
Just wanna make sure I had it written down.
Did we do that for Steve's page fifteen in the master plan that we said we're gonna discuss?
We're gonna table that.
Table, we table that, I'm okay with that. So now we got comments from the commissioners, which, we don't have any comments, but does anybody have anything to add?
We table that already.
You did that, right.
Well, I don't have any to add.
I don't have anything to add, I'm good here.
And um, I do not, I do not.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice.